As with the last several meetings of the Board of Education, today's meeting will be conducted in an unusual manner. No members of the public are present at this meeting. Board members Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, and Ron Rosales are attending the meeting remotely. The other three members, Ben Blankley, Stan Reeser, and I, are attending the meeting in person. Mike Rhodey is not in attendance. This meeting is available to be viewed by the public in the following ways. The board meeting will be shared via WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, on the district's website at www.usd259.org/WPTVonline, or by searching WPTV on the livestream app for phone, Roku, Apple TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on our Wichita Public Schools YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cable Channel 20 and online at WPTV 10 times per week. The rebroadcast schedule is available on our website This information was made known to the public by public notices by the clerk of the board published on May 7th and May 13th, 2020. The agenda for this meeting was published on May 14th, 2020 under the Boe Meetings, Agendas and Minutes tab. The news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. Revisions made after the publication but prior to this meeting were updated today, May 18th, at 9:00 a.m. This version is being displayed at this meeting. The agenda for this meeting is available to be viewed and will be available after the meeting to be viewed under the Boe Minutes, Agendas and Minutes tab. At this board meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. Motions will be read before they are voted on, and each board member will announce how they are voting. The outcome of the vote will be announced after the vote has been taken. The public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at board meetings has been removed from the agenda. Public communications will not be placed back on the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. An executive session will not be held at this meeting. I want to reassure you that the board intends to conduct its meetings during this time a state of disaster is in effect and the manner that complies with the Kansas Open Meetings Act and in a way that protects the safety and health of the public, district staff, and our board members. Our next meeting will be on June 1st, and it will be held at noon at the School Service Training Room, 3850 North Hydraulic. Thank you. First item, Mike.
We need to have the board members identify themselves.
Oh, yes. We do need to identify ourselves for the public. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4, present.
Cheryl Logan, at large, present.
Ben Blankley, District 1, here.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, present, remotely.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, present.
Ron Rosales, District 6, remote.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm remote, not present.
Right. Thank you. Mike?
Consent?
Are we not doing education?
There's no education.
Oh, okay. I'm working off the old agenda, I apologize. Do you have any items to pull, Ben, off of the consent agenda?
I do not.
Okay. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4, I do not have any consent items to pull.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, nothing to pull.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District 3, nothing to pull.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, nothing to pull.
And Cheryl Logan, at large, nothing to pull. I would entertain a motion. Stan?
So moved. Stan Reeser, to accept the consent agenda.
Ben Blankley, District 1, I second.
Okay, the motion was moved by Stan and seconded by Ben. Please cast your votes and identify yourselves. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next item?
Under Finance Budget Report, administration will update the board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the board's information and discussion.
Okay, Susan?
I'm Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. Today's budget development report is essentially a continuation of the one we presented to the board at the last board meeting. So I'm going to jump right in, and I want to start with a look at our budget development timeline for the next few months as we get ready to prepare the 21 budget. So we are approaching the end of May. We have released some of our fiscal year 20 budgetary authority for spending. I believe I had shared with the board that those were on hold. We now have a budget plan for the remainder of the fiscal year, and those budgets are currently being expended by departments and schools. We are in the process of revising various budget scenarios based on kind of the changing landscape of public education and what our funding may look like. So those scenarios are in process. As we get into June, we would expect the state budget forms to be released, hopefully mid to late June. It kind of depends on if there's any legislative action that occurs this week that might impact school finance. And then at the end of June, we will have our close of business meeting. And as we go into July, we should have a first review of the fiscal year 21 budget for the board, and then we'll have our notice of hearing at the first meeting in August and the adoption at the second meeting. So hopefully, things will progress nicely. It will go fast, so it's hard to believe we're essentially just a few months out. I can't overemphasize the uncertainties that will be impacting this particular budget cycle. We've experienced the funding issues before. This is not an unfamiliar territory for us. But what is really unique about this year are the academic and operational unknowns as we get ready to look at what fall school may be. So building enough flexibility into the budget to adapt to kind of this changing landscape is going to be kind of a new challenge for us. Typically, our school year progresses on a very orderly fashion. We know when expenditures go out. We know when students get counted. There's just a whole lot of new variables that come into play as we look towards fiscal year 21, the school year 2021, and how we build enough flexibility into the academic learning pieces and our operational pieces so that we can adapt fairly quickly to that changing environment will be kind of a challenge for us. The state funding shortfalls, we'll continue to have to watch very carefully. We are in the process of building cash reserves that might be necessary if we experience some sort of mid-year cut, and we're going to have some discussion around that. Declining enrollment, we've talked about off and on over the last few months, but the impact of the pandemic on fall enrollment is certainly an unknown at this point. So we'll have to just watch that very carefully. We'll see how the state adapts to students coming back and in what form they come back to school. Federal funding still remains in flux. Certainly, there's the HEROES Act that has passed the House, and we're waiting to see what happens there. And there might be other federal funding packages continuing to kind of flush its way through down to the state and potentially into K-12. We'll have to keep a close eye on that as well. And impacts beyond fiscal year 21. Certainly, we are most concerned with getting our budget put together for '21, but we have concerns as we go into '22 in how do we best prepare ourselves for what might be an ongoing situation or potentially a worsening situation if we go out again in some sort of second wave. So all of those uncertainties will impact our budget estimates and assumptions. And so just keeping in mind that we're building a budget based on the best information that's available to us right now, we will try to build in that flexibility to be maneuverable as we go into the fall. I've shown this slide several times to the board. This was our fixed cost versus a new revenue estimate for '21 before COVID-19. What I wanted to show the board today was kind of the one possible worst-case scenario if, right now, the proportionate share of the estimated state budget shortfall would be passed through to our district. So this starts out with the premise that we would actually receive the new base of $45.69 per student, but that $653 million shortfall at the end of '21 would somehow be passed on to us in our proportionate share, which would be a $33.8 million reduction in funding, which would leave us basically in a deficit of $24 million before we account for our fixed cost increases. Once we account for those, we're back to being essentially $34 million short in our budget if that scenario would take place. Now, with the legislature basically coming back for only a day, we don't think this is the scenario that's going to be coming at us. We think more likely would be some sort of mid-year allotment process. We believe we're going to start the year with the funding that is budgeted. So now, our planning has kind of shifted more towards what do we do if a mid-year cut comes our way and how do we handle that? Just putting some numbers to that $34 million shortfall, if we would get a 30% mid-year allotment, that could be $10 million; 50%, $17 million; and 75% would be $25 million. Of course, it could be greater than the $34 million if those estimates that the state has made are actually off. And again, remember that they were making those estimates on less than a month's worth of data. So the challenges related to a mid-year cut, certainly, our limited contingency reserves, as they exist today, are a challenge. And we're going to spend some time talking about contingency reserves today. Many of our purchases are made at the beginning of a school year, so once those dollars are spent, it's very hard to maneuver then the further you go in the budget year. And then by the end of February, 70% of all our wages are basically earned. So there's just limited things, the further we go into the school year, to adjust to a mid-year cut unless you have reserves sitting out there that you are able to use for that purpose. Our budgets are actually already fairly tight. We end the year, right now, with very little end-of-year cash. So what are the items that we have kind of in our budget toolkit? There's programmatic reductions. We're familiar with those from the recessionary years. There's one-time action and delays of spending that we can look at. Today, we're going to talk about some federal relief and, again, the reserves that we have currently and how we potentially are looking to build those. So our contingency reserve is basically what you would call our rainy day fund. It is the only amount in our budget that doesn't have a plan attached to it. Every other source of funding that we have that has a cash balance has a purpose. So our bond and interest fund, we pay our bond payments with. So it's not that we can use, and those are restricted dollars, we can't use those somewhere else. Capital outlay is essentially spent now. We already have our five-year plan. We know where all those dollars are going. So there's very, very little money that sits on our sidelines in case of risk, in case of that rainy day scenario. So what I wanted to show you today, this chart is actually from the Council of Great City Schools. And for those that aren't familiar, the Council of Great City Schools is a collection of the 76 largest urban school districts across the United States. And every year, we submit information to a data collection resource that kind of compiles all of the data points from the various council members and compares them so you can kind of see where you fall compared to other large urban school districts. This chart shows the unassigned fund balance ratio, which is money that doesn't have a purpose over the total operational expenditures of a district. And the line that's kind of in orange is where we are, which is under 3%. The median for the council is 9%. And you can see that on the high end, the maximum is 39%. What this chart basically shows you is that we are very, very low percentage-wise as far as having that unassigned fund balance available to address risks if we don't get full funding. If nothing keeps you up at night, this chart could keep you up at night as far as where we sit compared to other districts of similar size. The other chart I wanted to share is, that was compared to large urban school districts. This chart actually compares us to districts in the state of Kansas. So KSD compiled similar information on a similar timeline as of July 1st of '18, and our contingency reserve has not changed since that date. So it compared operational expenditures over the total of general and supplemental general funding. So you can see USD 259 is on the far left, low end of the percentage of cash balances in the state of Kansas. So the idea that, at least in our case, that we're sitting on cash is absolutely incorrect. We are very, very low, and certainly low for a budget of our size. Certainly, all the professional organizations would indicate we should have closer to two months of operational expenditures in contingency. That would mean our balance should be closer to $80 to $100 million, and we're sitting at around 14.8. So what does that mean as far as kind of an action plan? So of our 14.87 million contingency reserve, and again, to put that number in perspective, a teacher payroll will run us $20 million. So we don't have even enough contingency to cover a full teacher payroll. Our highest state aid month is February. That's $33 million. If they would have missed February's state aid payment for some reason, we would be short over half of that payment. We could not make it up with contingency reserve. So those are just kind of budgetary perspectives when you're looking at our 14.8, almost 14.9 million of contingency. We'd have an action plan at this point to capture the fiscal year '20 savings, to increase contingency reserve as a hedge against a possible mid-year cut in fiscal year '21. Our goal is to accumulate in total about $25 to $30 million using those savings in utilities, fuel, and other budget lines as we've kind of compressed spending in these last few months of the year. The risks, obviously, is that we'll have some. In fact, cash balances are actually up for audit, so we'll have to kind of defend our position. I think we have very solid ground to defend our position knowing the financial situation that's facing the state. Certainly legislatively, there has been scrutiny or put towards cash balances. We will need to stay committed to the fact that we need to safeguard these resources for fiscal year '21 and potentially beyond. This isn't a one-year issue for us. We've already shared that fiscal year '22, between the declining enrollment issue and the potential shortfall that could continue, we are also at risk going into '22. So this isn't a one-year plan. We needed to improve our contingency position anyway, and then we'll need to safeguard that contingency as we move forward here in these next few years until we're kind of outside of this crisis. And even then, I would highly recommend we stay at a level where we have less risk if we miss a state aid payment or something of that nature. Which takes us to our other budgetary solution, which is the federal CARE stimulus money. This is the first package that we know definitively what's coming to us, and that is an amount of $17.3 million of stimulus dollars, one-time money that has, it's 12 different categories of allowable uses. It's pretty broad. Really, the only tieback is it has to be for COVID-related activities. So whatever you're spending it on needed to be related to some sort of impact from COVID-19. KSD has shared with us, and we expected this, that there will be very robust oversight on the spending of these dollars. So we need to be rock solid on how we move forward with our choices of expending these federal dollars. We are going to track them separately, so it's going to be very clean. We'll know exactly where those dollars are going, and we'll be able to report on them very easily. There is also this special condition related to these dollars that you continue to pay employees and contractors during a period of any disruption, so we're potentially looking at towards this fall, to the greatest extent practicable. That practicable is an interesting word. We don't have a lot of definition yet around what that means, but certainly, it would indicate to the greatest extent that makes sense given the current situation that we're facing. So again, that's going to be a fluid situation. We're going to have to kind of monitor that as we go through, and hopefully, we get a little bit more guidance from the state exactly what that means. Right now, what our plan is, as we look towards the high-need areas as we move into fall planning, we know a good quarter of it will most likely be targeted to the protective equipment and cleaning supplies. Supply chains are a challenge, particularly for the wipes. The other items, we believe we will be able to get in without issue. They are running slightly more expensive, as you can imagine, than they typically would at other times in the course of our history. So we, but we don't anticipate any issues with masks or cleaning supplies at this time. Again, that situation could change, but we'll need about 25% of it for those purposes. The other big need is going to be around technology. And we've had several conversations related to technology and our plans for a lease. We'll need to kind of roll some of this money into that plan so we can expand faster than we had otherwise planned to do. And that will include hardware and internet access. So those two components, because again, the device doesn't do you much good if you don't have the access to the internet. Again, there's a lot of federal bills that could potentially come in and support that need as well. But right now, that is kind of our most pressing need, the thing we believe we need to get most prepared to handle if we have to go in and out during the course of the fall and into next winter. And then we'll leave 10% for kind of other needs that we know we're going to have, including student support, such as mental health, summer school for '21. And then we certainly can use those dollars to cover those continuous learning expenses we already have on the books. So that's kind of our tentative plan. At the end, we'll leave some opportunity for you to give us feedback on your thoughts there, but we'll kind of finish up before we open that up. So kind of in summary, our action plan related to CAREs is we want to use the CARE stimulus funds to provide for critical supplies and services needed to respond to COVID-19 impacts. Our goal is to use these funds primarily to get our technology upgraded quicker than we had kind of planned to originally, and then our personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. The risks, obviously, here are, there are a tremendous number of needs, but we have, it's a lot of money, but it's still a limited number of dollars. And with technology, it will go fast. And then the kind of the flip side of that, there's a tremendous number of wants, tremendous number of good things to do with this money, but unfortunately, we have to kind of focus on those priority items first and then get, see what other packages might come later. Our current budgetary actions, I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we have released partial budgets to programs in schools so that they can do what they absolutely need to do to get ready for the school year, but not much more. We've been pretty limiting on what we're allowing spending to occur. But we are moving forward with replacement certified hiring. I think we had told you that we were only focusing on hard-to-fill, and we've expanded that to include just about every certified position that we have to try to get, you know, full staffing, ready to roll for the fall. We have not moved to classified yet. That will be a decision coming, hopefully, within the next few weeks. Programs are actually working on 10% reduction scenarios. Again, we don't anticipate at this point needing it, but we want to have that in the back pocket as we learn a little bit more about what our plans are for the fall in the next month or two. We might need those additional dollars in reserve, so we might actually hold them and then release them during the course of the year. There are a lot of options open to us at this point, and we're just going to have to have a little bit more information before we kind of make final decisions in these areas. I've shared this graphic with some of my other meetings last week, and I think the analogy is actually good. We know that there is a financial hurricane, period. It's not, this isn't a watch, this is a warning. What we don't know is exactly if we're going to get the "I" or if we're going to get an outer rain band and just as kind of a glancing blow. We don't know if there will be tornado spawn from the hurricane and what other things we might have to face along the way. But it is a time to prepare. It's not a time to panic, and we aren't panicked at all. We have our plans in place, and we'll have some other options that we'll be bringing to the board in a couple future board meetings, and we'll have those discussions. But we feel our plan is, at this point, is solid. It probably won't be as good as I'd like it to be. You know, I'd like six months in contingency reserve if I had my real choice. But it is a time that we have, we believe we've taken the right steps at the right time. So we feel we're preparing as best we can, given the unknowns coming at us. So our kind of budget takeaways for today, kind of a continuation of our last meeting. There are many uncertainties that will impact the budget planning. Some of our assumptions may not be as solid as we typically have year to year because of the changing situation, and it's just good to keep that in mind. We believe, at least at this point, it appears a mid-year cut of all scenarios is probably more likely than a reduction at the beginning of the year. And again, that might not happen either, but that would, again, be the more likely scenario that we're planning for right now. The district does have an extremely low contingency reserve related to its overall operating budget. Increasing that contingency reserve from savings and also using the CAREs money for our most critical supply needs will be very important budgeting tools for fiscal year '21. And then the limited recruiting and spending that are now occurring to finish out fiscal year '20 are well underway, and our reduction scenarios continue. So at this point, I will stand for questions.
Are there questions? Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4. Just a couple housekeeping things. Now, why is the National School Board Association number 2.89 reserve, and then KASB or the state one shows 8.64? What's?
The difference is how the data that they request. So the council, that is really just looking at contingency reserve.
Okay.
When KSD kind of looks at cash balances, they'll include whatever money you have left in bilingual or at-risk or some of those other weighted funds. So their spendable dollars are a little bit more broadly defined than the council did. So that's why we showed you both, so that you could see both the state, how the state defines cash reserves and how the council kind of looks at cash reserves, which is a slightly different way, but both confirm we're low.
And I just want to make sure, from the public's perspective, the question you asked, you said the National School Board, but what you're referring to is the Council of Great City Schools, just so that people won't go to the National School Board looking for that.
Right.
Exactly. And Stan Reeser, and I think I misspoke. I said KASB, but it's Kansas Department of Education, not Kansas Association of School Boards. Okay. Stan Reeser, second question. Just for the sake of the public, the one reason why our reserves are healthy but not expansive is because, as a taxing body, we do not want to be taxing people just to be sitting on their cash. And the legislature is very sensitive. The Kansas legislature is very sensitive. Like these few school districts that are up in the 60, 70%. I can imagine, they have been, they have to be getting a lot of criticism for having that much cash reserves. But you hear the legislature speak a lot about you should have healthy reserves, but at the same time, we don't want you taxing people just so you can sit on their cash.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. That is the criticism of having high levels of cash reserves.
That is, that is the criticism of having high levels of cash reserves is, in fact, the terminology is that schools shouldn't be banks.
Right.
So, we aren't in the business of collecting dollars just to sit on them. We're in the business of educating students. And the dollars that are given to us on a year-to-year basis, whether through state aid or through local tax effort, should be used for the students that you have in front of you. And we 100% agree with that. We just feel especially right, when you look at the size of our budget and the size of our rainy day fund, we're a little bit out of balance. We should, I wouldn't want to be 60%, but higher than having three or four or five days' worth of operating reserves. We need to improve our situation just a little bit, but still, to your point, not be a bank.
When you say improve it a little bit, what would you recommend our reserves should try to, and this is basically kind of thinking ahead for our next couple budgets, what, what would you be comfortable, or what is the standard of what we should try to be at?
So, if you look to, like, the Government Finance Association levels, you would get closer to that two-month
Okay.
...number. I think that is some discussion that the board should probably have as we move forward, is what is their comfort level with having a cash reserve policy if we want to have a level that we try to achieve, whether it's a percent of operating expenditures or a flat-dollar figure. Our purpose right now is to just improve it so we are prepared for a cut. It wasn't really meant to be an action at this point, anyway, to say we're just, we're uncomfortable as low as it is, and we want to improve that situation just for the point of improving it. We're improving it for a purpose. But long-term, I think those are discussions we should probably have, you know, whether it's in a workshop of some sort, if we want to go down the path of a cash reserve policy.
Stan Reiser, and on the self-insurance reserve funds, legally, legally can we touch that? Can we use that as a temporary rainy day fund, or is that in a lockbox?
Susan Willis, those are in a lockbox. And the, the challenge, particularly with the health plan reserves, is that there's really, there's about five to six months of expenses in that particular fund, and you have to have a runoff amount. You just have to have a certain level, otherwise your plan becomes, you know, basically unstable. So, we, even if we could, which we can't, we wouldn't do it.
Right.
We wouldn't go to that fund.
Okay. And I, okay, I remember now. So, we think perhaps, Stan Reiser, again, we think perhaps the 30%, 10 million is probably, and I, I don't want to hold, I'm not going to hold this to, hold you to this, but we think that's maybe the most likely scenario, or are we being?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Reiser, you want me to get out a crystal ball, don't you?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have a good feel at this point, because a lot of what we're hearing, at least at the state level, is we're starting near fine. So, they've not given us any indication that, that a cut is imminent, that we have anything to have great concern about. Financially, though, when you look at the state ending balances, common sense tells you something will have to happen. Now, what we, what kind of the big question mark is, will federal packages come in to support that? And that's what we're kind of waiting for. I'm sure that's what the state is also waiting for, is how will federal relief impact the state's ability to meet its obligations? So, obviously, the 25 to 30 million puts us estimating maybe between 10 and 15 million dollars, if we want to leave that core 14 and almost 15 that's already there, there. So, I think you could surmise that that's where we might be thinking we could be, but I wouldn't want to put money on any outcome at this point.
Thank you.
I have a couple of follow-ups as well. Cheryl Logan, at large. The contingency reserve, you, you said we currently have 14.8 million in our contingency, and that we, with the savings that we're collecting now at the end of the year and so on, we may have between 20, 25 and 30 million. So, just to round that, if we had 25 million to, we'd have 40 million?
Well, no, the, the ending goal is an end goal. So, my hope is, we take the 14 and change that we have, and we add 10 to 15 to it for a total of 25 to 30. I don't think we're going to get any, no, we won't get to 40.
Okay. That, that was my question, because that was not clear.
It's a total, that's the end goal amount.
So, so, you're including the 14.8 in whatever we're able to save at the end of the year?
Susan Willis, yes, correct.
And, and that's probably going to get us around this 25 to 30 million?
Yes.
And two months of our contingency reserve, if we have that as our goal, is how much money?
Two months of operating expenditures, is that what, so, we are 40 to 50 million dollars a month in spend if you take our entire budget over the course of a 12-month. We, of course, know we spend more cyclical than that. So, again, you would be looking at that $100 million if you really wanted to cover two months.
Eighty to 100 million, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're a fourth of the way of where we should be.
Right, right. And again, I don't think anyone, it's probably not realistic to think that we would get to that two-month figure, but even to get to one month might be an area of conversation at some point of maybe making a goal.
And, and I think that's critical, because we haven't in the last few years, but on my tenure on the board, we have had state payments delayed on us multiple times. And if we don't have enough in contingency to reserve to continue to pay our staff and our bills, that's a big issue.
Susan Willis, we have historically had to dip into contingency to cover budget shortfall. Particularly, I think I can recall, it was maybe 1112 or 1213, one of those years where we, where we ended up having to go into contingency because of budgetary shortfall. We would prefer not to have to do that again, certainly, but we want to be prepared if we need to. And we need to be prepared, given our current situation, perhaps at maybe a higher level than historically we've looked at.
And, and we need to be prepared, not only at a little bit higher level, but that we have enough there to cover if they're a month late on their payments or whatever. Okay. Second question is, in regards to the technology needs that you talked about, raising that to 65%. We have been approving technology in our meetings over the last few meetings. Is that part of the 65% and we just, or is this an addition to what we've already approved?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. So, the, kind of the, the last big purchase that went through for board authority was teacher equipment, and so that was the focus of that particular purchase. What we're looking at right now is student technology. And particularly, we're focusing, at least early in the planning, on some secondary needs so that we can get that embedded internet access into some of these machines. We have a number of machines that could deploy for elementary, and we're looking at how we determine internet access for those families, but where, where the, you see the need for having kind of the faster machines and a little bit more capacity are at the secondary level. So, those purchases would be, at least at this point, focused on secondary students and then using some existing for elementary, and we might have to have a mix of new, depending on what is internet capable and what isn't. So, some of our equipment is older and doesn't have the right technology to just be able to, to be fully internet access right from the get-go. You'd have to have some sort of connection point, and some families will have that and some will not. So, just a lot of fact-finding will still need to happen around some of that technology work, and we're in the process of, that team that's working on those initiatives will be coming back to you with kind of an overall plan related to that student spend, but this, this CAREs money and the lease would be focused on getting our student technology up and running quite a bit faster than we had probably planned to, more of a phased approach before. Now, we're going to have to get serious more quickly.
So, it, it really is money that we have not approved yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. We'll be bringing that whole package back to the board, which will include the lease and the CAREs and what we're going to do with it. Probably, if it's not on the 1st, it'll be on the 15th. One of those two meetings, we'll be bringing you back, kind of that whole, that whole package look.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions for, for Susan?
Ben.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben.
Ben Blankley, District 1. So, the scenarios that we were looking at right now assume that the LOB stays at 30 and does not increase to 31 or 32, 33?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. We will, we are building budgets based on all three options, well, four, be staying at 30, going to 31, 32, and 33, and the impact that would have on the mill, because certainly, I think at this point, that would not be something that we would necessarily, well, we'll have to talk through whether the board has, has an interest in moving on the LOB if it means a property tax increase. We're trying to make our primary plans related to no property tax increase at this point, but we will show you, moving on that, what that would do to the mill. So, we will be bringing those options back to you most likely in June.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm seeing no other, or hearing no other questions, so, oh, Stan?
But I wanted to see if anyone from the remote wanted to ask first before I?
I'm not hearing anything.
Okay. What, Stan Reiser, one last question about the CAREs Act or the federal dollars, and for the sake of the public, again, the, basically, the 17.3 that we're expecting or has been approved, and I know the public sometimes gets confused when they hear plans and bills that have been passed, but they still have not actually become law. So, right now, all we know for sure is the 17.3 million from the federal government, right?
Susan Willis, yes, that is correct. We have actually received that allocation from KSE, so we're, we are solid on that particular federal funding, and we actually can start to draw it down based on our expenditures. So, we're, we're confident that that money is available on there, we're good, but there are other packages that are certainly still in discussion that may have an impact. We just don't, we have not been made aware that anything's defended, nor have we been made aware of an amount that potentially would be coming our way. And certainly, we're planning right now without it because
Right.
...we don't have any other information to the contrary.
Stan Reiser, and, and so, just to, again, to clarify for the public, the 17.3 million dollars, though, is not expected, nor would it probably be advisable for the federal government to even want this to happen, but the 17.3 million really has zero effect except maybe a little bit on the margins on our cash reserves. Is that correct?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, we would have absolutely no intention, and you couldn't put
Right.
...the 17.3 million dollars into some sort of reserve. You have, there is a, there is a sunset for these funds, you have to spend it by September 30th of '22, or you basically lose your ability to draw it down. So, and we've had, I think we shared with the board, certainly, these federal packages are very helpful in crisis times.
Correct.
But you certainly don't want to build them into the structure of your budget as ongoing money, because once they go, they create quite a budget hole that you have to fill with other dollars. So, while we like the plan related to technology and supplies, or those are one-time purchases, we'll have to figure out sustainability related to technology, but certainly, we would hope that the cleaning supplies, we won't have those needs for, you know, ongoing for years and years. We might, but I guess we'll see.
Stan Reiser, and I just want to make that clear for the public, because there's just that, I don't, if we did, as a board policy, decide that we wanted to build the cash reserves up further than they are now, and we make a policy decision on whether it's one month or two months, or whether it's 20 million or 30 million instead of 14 million, this is outside of that discussion.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, yes. In fact, the, the way the federal dollars work is, you spend it and you are reimbursed. So, you can't, you don't get the funds and are able
Oh, I see.
...to put that into an account.
Okay.
You actually spend your dollars and you provide the justification.
Okay.
We've spent, you know, $5 million on cleaning supplies. Here are the receipts, and they refund you back the money.
Stan Reiser, thank you.
Just a follow-up on that. This is Cheryl Logan. But we can count the things that we've already spent on Corona, can we not?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, yes, we can. We're waiting essentially to see what we'll need to spend on the technology and those other needs, to see if we'll have funds even left over, because we do know we have the summer school needs, we know we'll have for next summer, we'll have other, there may not be enough dollars left to reimburse for the continuous learning supplies, but that is one area you can actually go in and request that reimbursement. So, from our standpoint, again, going to that needs, kind of those high-priority needs, our high-priority needs, at least where we were proposing, is we need to get ready for '21 and what '21 looks like. Once we have those issues addressed, if there are dollars to reimburse for the continuous learning, we could go there, but we need the, we need the cleaning supplies for sure and the PPE equipment, and then, technology certainly is a close second to that.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much, Susan. We appreciate your input, and nothing like working with your hands tied your back, behind your back sometimes. Next item?
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. Under miscellaneous, there will not be an executive session, which leads us to the adjournment.
Do I have a motion?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I move to adjourn.
Stan Reiser, District 4, second.
It's been moved by Ben and seconded by Stan that we adjourn the meeting. Please cast your votes. Start with Stan.
Stan Reiser, District 4, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Thank you very much, and remember that our next meeting is June the 1, June the 1st, here at the School Service Center at 12:00 noon. Thank you.